Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Pacifica City Council meeting. Do you want me to slow down so the city clerk can get?
She's all red.
Okay, now I can go. Welcome, everyone. Nice to see a nice full audience to the February 24th, 2014 City Council meeting. And we're going to call it to order. And roll call.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ervin.
Here.
Mayor Nyheart.
Present. Salute to the flag is by Councilmember DeGruy.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And is there a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar. Councilmember Stone.
Vote and move approval.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem.
Second.
Councilmember O'Neal.
I just, I would just like to maybe have a little bit more explanation about the, I'm looking for the, for the computers.
Computer equipment purchase. Item three.
Computer, yeah, item number three. Not necessarily, just some comments about it and just flesh it out for the public.
Can we do it informationally now?
Or do I need to pull it off the consent?
Please go ahead.
We should pull it off consent.
Okay. So I guess I request that item number three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and you are pulling it off the consent calendar. Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Sure, let me just send my motion for the moment and then, yep.
Okay, or you could just remake it for everything minus number three.
Okay. So I'll move approval and with item number three being placed to consideration.
My second.
Okay, any other comments? All right, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And we will take that up under consideration. We do have a pretty busy audience tonight because I think we've got a couple of very important presentations. And the first one is the San Francisco Organized Project with the Peninsula Interfaith Action. And it, I believe, is what you see up here already, but it's the housing affordability to the workplace. Thank you. I don't know who I'm introducing, so.
Ellen Haig. Good evening. My name is Ellen Haig. I'm a resident of Pacifica and a member of SFOP PIA, an organization that was recently created by the merger of Peninsula Interfaith Action and San Francisco Organizing Project, two sister organizations committed to the cause of social justice. Our purpose here tonight is to bring attention to the critical and growing need for affordable housing in the city of Pacifica and to ask the city council to investigate and enact solutions to this great need in our midst. Members of our community are being squeezed and pushed out because housing costs are rising and they can no longer afford to live here. By definition, housing is affordable when it consumes no more than 30% of a person's income. The median rent for a two-bedroom apartment in San Mateo County is $2,400 a month, which means a person has to be making $46 an hour to afford their rent. So who is making $46 an hour in Pacifica? It's not our children's teachers. It's not the postal worker who delivers your mail. It's not the EMT who responds to our emergency. It's not the childcare worker who cares for our children. These are working, productive members of our community, people that serve us every day. Where are they going to live if there is no affordable housing? Shouldn't we care about working people in our community at all levels of income? I would like to share a few responses to a recent housing survey that we conducted. We asked, how have high housing costs affected your family and friends? Our neighbor's landlord is evicting them because she realizes she could collect $2,700 a month rent rather than the current $2,100. Family pays $2,400 a month to live in Lindemar. Their income is fixed at $2,600 per month. They have to take odd jobs to supplement their income. Our daughter graduated from San Francisco State two years ago. It took her a year to find employment. Because of her college loans, she can't afford an apartment, so she's living with us. My mechanic in Pacifica, with tears in his voice, told how he gets home from Novato after dark, thus has no time with his children. A childcare worker who is vital for a family who lost their mom travels from Tracy for hours to work here. Incomes are not keeping up with the cost of housing in Pacifica. For many people who work in Pacifica, there is a big gap between their income and their rent, and it is only going to get worse. We urge you to vigorously investigate approaches to this issue. Our third speaker, Monica, will talk about possible approaches to alleviating the pain. Pacifica is a caring community, and addressing this issue is in the self-interest of our residents and of the community as a whole. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gloria Stofan, and I too am a Pacifican resident and a member of SFOP PIA. With the first slide, with the first slide, as Ellen said, it takes an income of $46 an hour to afford the median-priced two-bedroom apartment in this county. Now, I'd like to show you what some of our essential workforce members make. As you see, none of these workers, people who are obviously vital to our community, none of them make enough. For many people who live and work in our city, the gap between their income and their rent is only getting worse and worse. So let's see at what affordable housing looks like. In your packet and on the screen, you will see that affordable housing is no longer that ugly, inferior, poorly-built look that many people associate it with. Today, it's often the very best housing on the block, and that's because of the high standards it's held to. These slides of development are created by, are developed by Mid Peninsula Housing. MidPen's been building communities, changing lives for 40 years. They've done this by developing quality, affordable housing, building it and managing it. It's important to note that MidPen doesn't build it and walk away. They build developments and manage them as well. The first slide is City Center Plaza in Redwood City. It's mixed-use, transit-oriented, family housing. It's 46 units, garden apartments above, and commercial below, commercial space below. The second slide, Mission Gateway in Union City, is mixed-use, family housing. It's 28 units, has a, and has a retail component. River Wood Grove, transit-oriented, family housing in Santa Clara is our third slide. 27 units, two-to-three-story apartment and townhouses. Our fourth slide, Baker Park, is in San Jose. Family housing, 20 units, townhouses and townhouse-style apartments. And the last slide, Peninsula Station. It's mixed-use, transit-oriented, family housing in San Mateo. It's 68 units, a little larger, residential and retail spaces. They're pretty attractive. They're actually very, very well-built. We urge you as city council members to investigate and always, and find ways to create affordable housing, housing that's affordable to the workforce. And I would add to retirees and to people with special needs. Thank you.
And I'm Monica Olson. I'm a longtime member of Pacifica or resident, and I've probably been here longer than some of you. And I mean to say before you were born. Maybe. Obviously, there is need for affordable. Beached crisis proportions. We need to develop new approaches.
Monica, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Monica.
Talking to the microphone. You can raise it.
Wait.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
We need to develop. Is that better?
Yes, much.
New approaches to addressing this community need. We cannot continue to do things the way we have in the past and expect to bring about changes we need. This year, the city is involved in a housing plan that the state of California requires to be completed by the fall of 2014. This plan is prepared only once every eight years, I guess. Okay. Which means that in all likelihood, this will be the last comprehensive review the city will make of affordable housing policies for another eight years. On the screen, you'll see a menu of policies that could have an impact. These policies are planks in a platform being promoted by a coalition of community groups who are concerned about the need for affordable housing in San Mateo County. SFOP and PIA is a member of this coalition, as is the prestigious Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. An extended version of this platform will appear on the website for ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. You'll see that the policies are divided into various headings, inclusion, local funding sources, optimized, affordable housing sites, anti-displacement policies, site and building regulations. What we ask of the city is to review these policy options and incorporate as many of them as possible in the current housing plan. By doing so, the plan can become a driver for action in the coming years and catalyze changes that effectively address a critical and deepening community need. Thank you. And for those in the audience who'd like to have more facts and statistics for the county, there are forms on the side table. And also, this blue sheet, if you'd like to help us with your stories, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a clarifying comment, and we got into this in our strategic goal study session, and one of the concerns for some individuals is that we were talking about low-income housing. And affordable housing is really quite different, and in the sense that we're looking at people literally being priced out of the market. And I sit on ABAG as the San Mateo, one of the San Mateo County representatives, and I also am, very shortly, Chair of CCAG, both of which are interested in the transit-oriented kinds of housing because our workforce isn't able to live in the areas that they are close to. And so when you're talking about things like the Climate Action Plan and other things, it's all related to being able to be here. So we wanted to make sure that this presentation happened so the public actually had an understanding of what we were talking about more fully. I do have a couple of lights, or I think, Mayor Protem?
Again, I'd just like to reiterate what Mayor Nyheart just said, that it was, it is really important to council to make sure that the citizens know exactly what is meant by affordable housing and workforce housing. And it's such an incredibly important topic today. Everywhere I go and everybody I talk to, their main concern today is affordable housing. Just everybody, we're not talking about people, and everybody has that need. We're not saying that people that are unemployed or are out of work don't have the same needs, but we are talking specifically about people that are employed, that work very hard, that are, that teach our children, that do services for the city, that are out there every day working very, very hard, that are struggling to get by. And we need that balance of housing, you know? So we need single-family residences, apartments, you know, everything, so we can make sure that everybody that wants to work here and live here has that option of doing so. And again, that whole issue of transportation and having to drive so far to work in the city that you want to work in, it's just an incredible problem. And I really appreciate you coming out and discussing it, and also just that issue of, you know, resistance from the public, that, that there's concern about what exactly it means. And this is good on so many levels for our community, to embrace the people that want to be here and want to work here. And so it's something that absolutely we intend to investigate and do what we can to support our community. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neal.
I have to admit, I kind of was trying to work on this when I was in the school district, and I was wondering if it would be possible if we could study, add a schedule at the next meeting, a study session, or how we want to move forward, looking at the housing element plan, the general plan, the specific plan for Palmetto, and also the policies and procedures for in-lu fees, which we're going to be supposed to be getting our first check, you know, have the, you know, just kind of cover that. And I'd like to throw that out to see if the rest of the council would be interested in having that on the agenda.
We could agendize an update. Some of those things are already done, so we have to kind of make them merge. Do you have something you want to add to that?
Well, just to emphasize what Councilmember O'Neal said about the general plan coming forward, it'll be this spring, and in fact, I was just looking at a timeline last week. So it would be a natural to talk about, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. It would be a natural, of course, to talk more about affordable housing as part of the housing element, which would be part of the general plan discussion. So if it fits in that framework, that's easy and natural to bring forward and have a little more emphasis on that. If you want something separate with more emphasis, then it's council's pleasure. I'd be happy to bring that back to you after I have a chance to look at the agenda and make sure which meeting it would fall best on.
There is one thing I would like to add to this discussion, and that is that you talked about the Association of Bay Area Governments, which is ABAG, and you're really referring to the One Bay Area Plan. Priority development areas, which we've been talking about for some time, are what you just saw up here. Each and every single one of those exists in a priority development area, and it's transit-oriented housing that really drives that. 70% of our dollars for transportation in the county go to cities that have priority development areas. We do not. We're part of the 11 that don't, and as a result, we compete with those 11 for 30% of the dollars. So it hurts us on a bunch of different levels not to look at this particular issue, and especially with some properties and things that may make sense on a bunch of different levels. So thanks.
You know, my concern is that this is something that I really believe we need to look at as a community for the people, okay? And I certainly understand where it's part of the general plan, but there's going to be a lot of other issues within the general plan that'll pack this room, okay? My concern is that we need to have some sort of focused look at the issue of workforce/ affordable housing for people. And that's, I think that can only be done by a study session or possibly a task force or whatever the council would decide.
I agree.
So do I hear a consensus to put that on the agenda for discussion?
You will. Councilmember DeGruy.
Certainly concur with that. I also want to thank PIA and everybody else in this grassroots movement to keep this on the forefront, and also for the inclusiveness of including people with disabilities, including developmental disabilities. Another factor that I've discovered as I look into this type of thing in my own work is the protections for anti-displacement once you actually get somebody in, in housing, because it can come to an end, so.
And that, very good. Brings us to Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember O'Neal. I think you brought it up at the la, not our last goal study session, but the one even before that, and I appreciate that, as well as the last one, of course. But I think in Pacifica, we were really looking for balance in the city. And I grew up on the coast, and I've seen the city really change a lot over the last 30 years or so, and seeing what housing prices have done and seeing how that's affected friends or family members or people moving out of the area, moving to the valley or north. And it's a vital thing for people, like Councilmember Ervin said, potential business owners that want to invest in our community but need somewhere to land while they're, while they're moving forward, and also people that just don't want to have to leave their home. It's really, what I mean by their home, the city. And so having that diversity of places to live is really, really important, and striking the balance within the city is vital. And I think that's been the theme for the last three years that I've been on city council, whether it's a balance with our economy, a balance with our traffic, a balance with our housing. We're, we're kind of trying to find our balance as a city, because the original model, this 1950s model and all these homes that we have that were built around the same time, that model needs to evolve. And part of that is this component, so I'm happy that we're talking about it. Thank all my colleagues for thinking that it's, it's a vital thing to look into and go forward with, and I do look forward to having a study session sometime in concert with the general plan, because this is vital.
So thank you very much for the presentation tonight. It's kind of a good start on where we're going, and I just wanted to leave you with a couple of thoughts to underscore exactly what you're saying. We lose, and Councilmember Stone, you just brought it up, we lose seniors all the time who have to go to Tracy or Grass Valley or somewhere else to live to be able to survive when they have to leave their own community. So I am thrilled to bring this up to, to figure out ways that we don't have to have that happen. And last but not least, and then I'm closing this, is the issue of the, the amount it takes to live here. Your numbers, people are sort of struck, they think that's too much or not right or something. But I had a person get a 50, move from Maine, got a $50,000 increase, thought they were going to be rich, right up until the point that they paid $3,600 for a two-bedroom apartment in San Francisco and couldn't afford it. So that's pretty striking when you think about it. We don't want to become that in Pacifica. So thank you for your presentation, and we will be moving forward with this discussion.
Yes, we will.
Okay. So that brings us to our second presentation for this evening, which I think is gathering crowd out there. Don't, everybody stay around, but we have our preservation, our peer support award, and Ian Butler is, I guess, the recipient, because the peer members are coming.
Good evening. I'm Anna Booth, President of POPS, Preserve Our Peer Supporters, and have come to present our 2014 Achievement Award for Service to Pacifica and the Peer to Ian Butler. I'm. I'm here with Kathleen Manning, our Secretary Treasurer, and Dottie Burba, winner of our T-shirt contest, the photography. And before I present the award to Ian, our, also our Vice President, Andy Pappas, would be here, but it's his birthday and it's also Ian's birthday, so we have a double birthday. One of them came and one of them had already had dinner plans. But I want to give Kathleen and Dottie a chance to say a few words.
Okay, well, Ian really deserves an award, and I'm glad he's getting one tonight. He's always very generous with his time and his talent, and he is always out there willing to help worthy causes. And, I must say, his humor and his music bring people together. He is great. He entertains at the peer party every year, and he always gets the crowd moving, and he has his funny songs about foggy Pacifica. Who, where, what is the name of that song?
Fog Bless Pacifica?
Fog Bless Pacifica. Right. And then he also plays at the castle when we have, the Historical Society has their tours, so he really deserves it. He also has two television shows, and he's a superb interviewer, and he gets people involved in public issues. So anyways, I do commend Ian.
I just want to say, I had the honor of receiving this award last year for a T-shirt, a photo. And just what I've learned about Ian Butler in his past year, this man far outweighs what I did. And he's really a blessing to this community, and everything he has done for the peer, for ecology, for everything, cutting trees, everything. He's a very talented, talented, blessing man, really is. Thank you.
Well, they've just about said it all for me, except for his five years of singing at the pier with him and his band and everything. He's also carried the heavy equipment, the mic and the, everything, because someone like Fred, who came from Redwood City last year, didn't have to carry all that stuff on his trip. But even was there being the sound man and the music man at the same time. So we are going to present to Ian our plaque, which says, Preserve Our Peer Supporters, Community Award for 2014, is proudly presented to Ian Butler in recognition of outstanding lifetime, community service and support of the peer. Congratulations.
Thanks.
That's a, it's a great birthday present you got there for me. It's just a coincidence, by the way, just, this is how I'm spending my birthday today. So I want to say thanks to Anna and POPS for, well, keeping the Herschel Harkins Memorial Pier alive, because it may be a somewhat dilapidated rundown pier, but it's our dilapidated rundown pier, and we take great pride in it. She's not only the finest open ocean pier in Northern California, she's the only one. That's a true fact, it's the only one in all of Northern California. I wish my fellow humpbacks were here, Bill Oakes and Larry Aren't. Oh, Bill's here, there you are. Because this is kind of for them, too, because they, those two were, accompanied me for most of the pier celebrations. In fact, they've been game for any ridiculous gig that I've invited them to play at. Not that the pier gig was ridiculous, but you get the idea. The point is, if it's for a good cause, these guys were in for it. And that's my motto. My motto, actually, for the past seven years has been, if you're crazy enough to ask me to do it, I'm crazy enough to try to do it, which has led me to do a lot of things that, frankly, I wasn't actually qualified to do, but I'm okay with that. For instance, you know, I'm not really a TV host, but I do play one on television. But I know that I'm, I know that I'm in over my head here, but that's okay, because in a small town like this, we're all a little bit in over our heads. We don't have the talent pool of San Francisco or Washington DC, so, you know, we're maybe closer to Pawnee, Indiana. Yeah, I don't know if you get that reference, but I'm cool with that, because I'd rather be in Parks and Recreation than House of Cards.
Right.
And Ian's like, I don't get that. That's okay, because you're too busy running the city to watch TV. Anyhow.
Definitely don't want to be in House of Cards.
The advantage of being in a small town like this, though, is that each of us can make a difference. For instance, POPS here, if there were no POPS, and that's Preserve Our Peer Supporters, there would be no peer at this point. And like POPS, we each need to find something that we all love and help to save that. You never know how you're going to be rewarded until you give it a try, but you will be rewarded. For me, when I started cleaning the Secret Waterfall, I thought the reward was going to be a job well done, maybe some exercise, but eventually I found a Colombian mammoth strewn amongst the trash. That's a pretty good reward, a friggin' mammoth. And now this, so it's a very nice, nice birthday present. Also, you know, I really should mention my wife, who's been really helpful for me to be out wandering around doing these things. I think of her as my, my ground control to my Major Tom. And then my kids have done a great job of putting up with dad being gone along a lot of the time. In fact, I think they may secretly prefer it.
I get used to it.
So, well, actually, and, you know, one more thing, on a more somber note, I want to mention that 10 years ago today, this very day, my father passed away. And I'd like to think that, you know, this is a little bit for him as well, and he inspired me to do a lot of the things that I do. And I'm happy to share this day with him. You can imagine, my birthday's changed since that time, but I'm happy that we can share it together. So thanks to everybody, to POPS, and everyone that makes this community such a special place to be. And in the words of the Crab King, we'll see you at the pier. Thanks.
Ian, hang out for a second. Ian, 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 stay, stay, stay.
What's that?
You know, we usually get to say a couple words to Ian, and I just want to go first and say, happy birthday. Nobody deserves this more, so thank you very much. Councilmember DeGruy.
Yes, you definitely deserve it. Happy birthday, and happy birthday to Andy. Thank you for all that you do, and we're not that small, actually, and we're very talented, and you're one of, all of you are very talented there. But the Preserve Our Peer folks, it wasn't too, too long ago, and I remember that in certain areas, parts of town, all over, it was let the thing go down. And through your hard work, all of you, you've managed to keep it on the front burner, and we've gotten some wonderful grants and some hard work to keep it going. And I don't know if everybody realizes this, but we get free marketing because of this pier. It's internationally, in the fishing magazines, it's a big time advertising for the city of Pacifica, so thank you all very much.
Councilman, they all want to say something. Councilmember Stone.
Ian, thank you for everything that you've done with the pier, and other things, of course. Definitely the first person that took me down to the Secret Waterfall, and
Yeah, you made it.
Even shared some of that mammoth with me, I really appreciate that. But thank you for everything that you've done, and maybe we can talk about, Jack, I know you do a lot of different things into entertainment, but maybe we can talk about selling some of our stories that we have here to Parks and Recreation, because I think we could make, we might be able to fix our budget problems, and I think you might be the man to help us. Just food for thought, we can talk about.
There was a time you put the crown on the wrong Miss Pacifica, that would probably be a good plot point.
There's a couple of them. We could talk about that over.
Absolutely. Councilmember O'Neill.
I, too, I wanted to congratulate Ian on his birthday. I've known Ian quite a time, because I think our kids were in the same school, correct?
That's right.
So that was nine years together. And then in PTO meetings, et cetera, and then we also, I don't know, I just, every time we go around, I seem to bump into you, whether it's, you know, the pier, or at the fireworks task force meetings, and stuff like that. So I just wanted to congratulate you, and thank you for all you, what you do in town. You know, and it helps make the patch of Pacifica a better quilt.
And Mayor Protem.
Like everybody else, I just really want to say happy birthday, and especially thank you so much for spending your very special day here with us, on top of everything you do for the community, and then you're here on your birthday. So thank you so much, Ian. And I just have to say, one thing that I appreciate about you so much is the way you make everybody smile and laugh, and even in the most contentious of situations, you bring in a lightheartedness and a feeling that we're all in this together, and you're so inclusive in everything you do, and you do so many wonderful things for the city, and that really is one of the most amazing things you do. So thank you so much for being you, and for all you do for the city of Pacifica.
Thanks.
And Ian, and Ian, hopefully, in addition to being a birthday present, and recognition of how much you contribute, hopefully this starts a trend for something different on your birthdays.
Yeah, thanks.
Very much so. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you. At least have the hardest job in Pacifica, so, good job.
So with that, we have a very short agenda, but we have no public hearings, and it brings us to council communications, oral communications, one item, and that's it. So, council. Councilmember Stone.
Great. Just wanted to report back on the Economic Development Committee. We had our last meeting between, or our first meeting of the year between our last council meetings. And I just wanted to say to council, I think you all did a great job choosing the members. Really great group, smart, energetic, and diverse, and it's really good, it's fine.
It's okay.
And I think they're going to really do great things. So the next thing that, or where we left the last meeting, is to evaluate the economic plan, and to, and the city manager's going to get the, the group, our revenue numbers, and where the revenue comes from, because they want to understand kind of where the most bang for our buck is, as far as action goes. So that's my report from EDC, and, like I said, great job picking the members. I also do want to, we're talking about community here a little bit, and
Just a second, I'm going to interrupt you. Folks, I'm sorry, I know it's great to, and I want to congratulate him more, too, but could you all step out in the hallway first, because we kind of have to go on with the meeting? Thank you. Go ahead.
We were talking about community today, and I just wanted to say that the benefit for Annika Johnson and Bella Hung that was put on this weekend at Terranova High School is a benefit for these little girls that are, are ill. And there was, I don't know, there had to have been 200 kids there. It was amazing, the amount of volunteers, and just community togetherness at that, I felt there with my son, and I saw your brother there, and I just, I saw people that I played baseball with when I was in high school, and college, and other places that I hadn't seen in years, and other community members, and it was just a really great coming together for a really great cause. And it's just one of the reasons why we love this city, is our sense of community. And I was just there in spades this weekend, so thank you to everyone that was involved with that.
Thank you. Councilmember DeGruy.
Yes, I attended both the Open Space Parkland Committee and the Economic Development Committee, and these are newly formed, not newly formed committees, but new people on them, and New Year starting. So it was, they're all excellent, doing a lot of good jobs. In the Economic Development Committee, I think it was mentioned that they will be asking members of the community, what is your view of Pacifica as we move forward with the economic development, and branding, and that sort of thing? So you will be asked, or find them, and tell them your points of view of what Pacifica is all about, and how you'd like to see it continue. There's a couple interesting activities that you can get involved with. The National Park Service and the National Geographic is having a BioBlitz. You can find this information, oh, sorry, on our Pacifica website, or on those committee websites. And they're looking for volunteers to do counting of specimens on Maori Point, and they're hoping, at least Christine from, who's our representative here, are hoping that, we have a lot of volunteers, so Pacifica stands out, be another way of getting our name in the news, and highlighting what we have here as an asset. So that's happening on the 28th, I believe, and 29th, and for the, we also had the Historical Society meeting this weekend, and the Ocean Shore Railroad car, which is an actual car that actually ran, the Ocean Shore Railroad, they're, they've been invited to come to the Mint for the railroad, I don't know, gathering there, and they're looking, Pacifica's looking for volunteers to go there as well. So it's another way of getting our Pacifica assets out there by you, the public, so look on our website, or the websites of each of those committees. We had the Sports Hall of Fame, and if you've never attended, it is one, another way, I would say, of being able to capture the history of Pacifica, and this time through the eyes of sports and teachers and schools, so it's very invigorating. I think that's, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember O'Neill.
I, I attended the congestion management meeting just before our meeting, and they went over this new type of lane they're thinking of, of high occupancy, where, but they, it's a toll road where they charge you per mile. Apparently, they're doing this in the East Bay, and it's a way to try to get traffic moving, and it's going to be high occupancy toll roads. So that was kind of interesting. They also talked about the possibility of a stormwater initiative, stormwater maintenance tax to be put on the ballot for San Mateo County, and that it may actually be a mail-in ballot, not on the November ballot, but a mail-in ballot, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't conflict with the Bay Restoration ballot measure that will probably be on the ballot in all nine counties. So that was my afternoon.
And Mayor Protem Irvin.
Okay, I attended a legislative committee from CCG, and we talked about some current legislation that's going to be coming up on the ballot in November, and one of those items was AB 418, which is stormwater legislation, and also the concern that the drought is bringing on in terms of other pieces of legislation, including a potential water bond, and the legislation that Councilmember O'Neill was just referring to in terms of a nine-county-wide measure that we may be looking at. And so we're just, a variety of people are looking at different ways to address stormwater and clean water, and a lot of those types of issues. I also attended my first Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting, and we talked about CERT training. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's Community Emergency Response Team, and it's really a wonderful, it's been going on for a number of years, and community members get together, and they're trained in a variety of areas, including triage, and first aid, and what to do in case of an emergency, when you potentially don't have the ability, that the police and fire and first responders don't have the opportunity to get to you in time. So that was really interesting, and it's just amazing how many community members get together and weekly go out and experience the training, and are interested in doing this for the other citizens in that city. And they also talked about something called Map Your Neighbor, Map Your Neighborhood, and that's kind of along the same lines, where somebody in the neighborhood will go around and get contact information for everybody that lives in the vicinity, and you can find out who might have certain tools or instruments that could be beneficial in case of an emergency. So that's something that is beginning to be developed in different communities, and if anybody's interested, they may want to go by the police station and get some information on mapping your neighborhood. And I also attended a library liaison committee, and we just talked about conditions of the library, and ongoing concerns that they have as well. And that's about it.
What just happened is exactly why city, the City and County Association of Governments is very hesitant about this. There were two things that just got merged. They are, there is a plan going forward, hasn't worked through all the details by any means to get the nine counties to put on a measure to save, it's really about restoring wetlands in the bay. It's not about stormwater, it's not about, but it is about clean water, because wetlands do clean, but it's about restoration of the bay. On the other hand, what is happening in legislation is that City and County Association of Governments, CCG, has asked to, if, because we've lost all of our funding for stormwater that we give back to the cities like Pacifica, so we don't have a source for that funding right now. So we've asked about if there is the ability to put, as an agency of all 20 entities, 21 entities, including the county, that are part of CCG, if they can put that forward to the public as a very small assessment for stormwater. Now, I will tell you, that has not, that did pass the Senate, it's gone to the House, it will probably be given to us as an authority, but it's still a long ways from being on any ballot of any type, because it is controversial among the membership of CCG. So we will see how that evolves and goes forward, but neither one is on the ballot at this point in time, and they're two very, very different things. I wasn't going to get into all of that, but I felt like I had to make that clear. However, HOT lanes, also controversial, also something that CCG is looking at, but it's based on a report, if you're interested, that I brought from CCG that was done by Transform, and we will be moving forward with presentation on the other side of those, because they also are sometimes seen as somewhat discriminatory. Those people who can afford to pay get the express lanes, and everybody else who can't afford to pay gets to be in the slow lane. They're talking about this on 101. It's, it's a completely hypothetical position, and we're doing informational reports at this point in time, so it's gone nowhere. I will tell you what is out, CCG's annual report is out, if you haven't seen it, as well as the Safe Routes to Schools report. And I would love it if you guys would look at this, because every year when we do budget, Safe Routes to Schools is a huge discussion point, because we're not sure if we're getting the bang for the buck on the money. And we're trying to come up with a metrics to measure that, and what really makes a difference. And so if anybody has any inputs, please share them with me, and I'll take them to the CCG meetings. We just had our administrative review today for the next meeting. We're doing our evaluation of our executive director, and then we'll move into budget season. But we did have a presentation at CCG this last meeting that was from PG&E that was incredibly helpful, and I hesitate using incredibly, because that's, that's Karen's word, but
Sorry.
I've got it down here. It was, it was complete with all the maps that have been done with PG&E. I've brought them back for each of what has been quite confusing, for those of you that remember when the gas line rupture happened in San Bruno, they told us we didn't have a distribution line, then they told us we did have a distribution line, then they told us we didn't have a distribution line, we assured the public we didn't have a distribution line, and then they told the public we did have a distribution line, and made me they told the public we did have a distribution line, and made me crazy. So consequently, in here is the explanation of what they mean by distribution lines, what the pressure is. And we have a fairly significant line going straight into the back of Odsted and Terranova. But what's more important about these maps is it also shows all the variations in piping, what needs to be replaced, what's in process with being replaced. So what I've asked our city manager to do is agendize a presentation like this for the rest of you, so that you can ask the questions and feel confident with the public and public information. The last piece, besides all the CCG meetings that I do, is this Friday night is the Council of Cities meeting, and we will be in Belmont, and the executive director from the California League of Cities will be our presenter, really focusing a lot on legislative updates and what's going on, and what the league has been working on in that arena. But more importantly, we will also be putting forward a couple of seats that are coming open, and I'm, I'm hopeful, in terms of the Lathco seat, for sure, that Mike O'Neill will probably put forward his name to run for that. And I would, I would be pleased, since he's been the alternate. And we've actually nailed down next month's also, which will be in San Carlos, and have a panel presentation on a lot of different types of shared services. I've gotten some information from, from Lori, and about how cities are saving and training in all kinds of different ways by sharing services. With that, I just want to remind people that on the 5th, we will be having a study session on the Climate Action Plan, and then moving forward to finish that legal requirement by the state, to meet our requirements in that. It's not really an option, we need to finish it. And I think that's it for now. There's been a lot going on. Certainly, Sports Hall of Fame was amazing, as always. English Channel, I didn't know we had a person that had actually swum the English Channel in Pacifica, but we do. So there were some pretty amazing people there. Okay. With that, we'll move to oral communications. Did you have something else? Okay. So the first card goes to Janice Genvo. Now, these are for items that are not on the agenda anywhere else, or have not been in the presentation. And you have three minutes. There will be a warning light. I see a lot of new people, that's why I'm reviewing this. There will be a warning light that comes on. You still have a minute after that. But Janice Genvo, followed by Serena Ip, followed by Vanessa Kamerson. And I'm probably butchering these names, and I apologize.
Can I bring the mic down?
Yes, and do bring that mic down, right to your mouth, so we can all hear you. Okay.
Good evening. I'm one of the residents here, and then the reason I have a house alarm, that's why I'm here today, that I have to pay annual permit. And I think it's a little bit kind of pricey, after we, I'm still paying monthly for ADT, and it's also increasing, I think, because ADT in other cities, neighboring, they don't have that annual permit for the rest, homeowner. But that's the reason I'm here, because it's saving a lot of, actually, for fire, storm, and burglary, and safe for the public, and also it saves me for my property insurance. That's the reason. So I'm just asking, why do we have to pay annual, you know, permit for that, on top of what we're paying for monthly service fee? So it's kind of a little bit, I mean, why do we have penalized homeowners instead of the business, ADT should be, it should be the ADT, not to the, not to us, as a customer, to them? Because we're paying like $24.99 a month, times 12 months, that's a lot, on top of what we're paying, you know, adding all the expenses. It's just like, then with loan, education loan, it's struggling everything. You're just talking earlier, I just walked in earlier, that, about affordable housing. This is one thing also that adds to our expenses, but, because we've been having burglary around the neighborhood, when my couple doors, when they went out of town, they took their big dog, and I don't have that. I'm only depending, because I'm, okay, so that's the reason I'm here.
The chief of police is right directly behind you, and he, I'm sure, will answer that question for you. We don't actually answer questions, just for anybody that's coming up here that's new to this. Oral communications, we can't respond to, because it wasn't agendized. So you're just putting it forward, but there just happens to be somebody standing right back there that'll, that'll work with you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure. So we don't get into an exchange, just so everybody's clear. You can come up and say whatever to us, but we don't respond. Serena Ip, followed by Vanessa Kamerson, followed by Anita Reese.
Good evening, Mayor Nyehart, and members of the city council. My name is Serena Ip, and I'm a resident of Pacifica. I actually came tonight to comment on the presentation you heard earlier by SFOP and Pia. As a young professional with a master's degree, I am shocked to find myself still living with my parents here in Pacifica. It's due to the high cost of living in this area, obviously. Nearly everyone I grew up with here has not been able to put down their roots. Many of my friends pay the majority of their income to rent, live with their parents, or have moved to areas like Sacramento. We are young professionals who make good salaries, but we still live at home, because the market rate for rent in quality housing is going even beyond the reach of those who make median income or more. There needs to be a push for local policies to keep community members from being priced out, community members that you were talking about earlier, such as teachers, paramedics, seniors who grew up here, and nonprofit employees. So I just wanted to thank you for allocating time today to hear tonight's presentation, and I look forward to hearing about the implementation of effective and meaningful policies in the upcoming housing element process. Thank you.
Thank you. Because that was an informational item, we can take those during oral communications?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. That's why we didn't deliberate on anything, just for the council and for the public. Vanessa Kamerson, followed by Anita Reese, followed by Roger Medler.
Hello, and I'm really grateful to be here tonight. I'm a resident of Pacifica, and I'm here just to speak about the affordable housing. I also just speak a little bit about what I've been through recently. So I'm a single mom. I do work at Starbucks, and I, and I go to school. And so it has been tough for me, and I especially seen the numbers up there about, you know, what we make and stuff. And, and so anyway, in the past, this past year, in 2013, I've moved five times, because, you know, it was a, you know, her, I split up with her father. So anyway, I found it hard to find a place, and so I ended up going into a shelter for six months. And then while I was there, I was actually granted a housing voucher. And from there, I was able to get a place over here in Pacifica. My rent is $17.95 for a two-bedroom, and I'm only able to afford that because my, my voucher is, you know, subsidized for me. In the meantime, I've placed my name on several waitlists, including MidPen, and so my name is on all the waitlists for MidPen. And I just was fortunate enough to have my name come up recently. And so I'm going to be moving, actually, to San Mateo in this next month. And so I'm pretty excited about the MidPen housing, and, and I just hope that, you know, there could be more for Pacifica, because I would love to stay here, but it's just, after my voucher runs out, I will not be able to afford it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Reese, Roger Medler, and Marcia Settle. There you are.
Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. And I'm also here to just comment about, and thank San Francisco Organized Project Peninsula Interfaith Action for their presentation, and also to thank you all in advance for your planned work on workforce and affordable housing. Affordable or workforce housing is an integral component of a stable household. Often, many of the families we serve at the Pacifica Resource Center spend 50% or more of their income on housing alone. Even though we have some funds to help with one-time housing assistance costs, to help keep people in their homes, the reality is that's not enough. So subsidized, below-market rate, and supportive housing is definitely needed, more of those things. It's not only going to help the families that we serve, who are the lowest income, but it'll help all families who are struggling to make ends meet, which, as I've said before, is one in four families in the city of Pacifica are actually eligible for our services in some way or another. And yet, we're not seeing those folks. So affordable housing will allow those folks who are kind of in that gap group be able to, to be more stable and more secure, and will continue to have, to allow the diversity that we see in Pacifica now. Unfortunately, the county as a whole actually sees it as a reasonable, what is it, a reasonable solution for folks to move out of this county. And I find that unacceptable. So I really encourage and hope that you all are able to find some ways to increase affordable housing in Pacifica.
Thank you. Roger Medler, Marcia Settle, and Ron Berger.
Hi, I'm Roger Medler, anyway. I'd like to thank Todd Slessinger for his support. And I have another neighbor here I'd like to thank. She says, "To whom it may concern, Roger Medler has almost singly-handed successfully in cleaning up the Seaview Tire and Brake Alley, and because of the persistence of demanding action from the city of Pacifica." I also have another neighbor here that says, "Some of my friends and the neighbors in Dolphin Drive are very disturbed by the noise from, from your shop." I guess they seem to think that they're talking to Bill Meyer, huh? But anyway. Laurie, I've tried to get in contact with you over, over 28 years of trashing my home and my neighborhood, and I was hoping to, I filed a complaint with you, and hopefully that I have called you, and I've sent you emails, and two city council members, two city council meetings, and I still haven't heard anything from you. But anyway, there's no certificate of occupancy. I have the documents. It says there's no certificate of occupancy, which I consider that being an illegal business for 28 years, and the violations continue. I've emailed you last week about noise, and the noise still continues. It's not going to stop. It's a tire shop, if you understand what a tire shop does. It makes noise, and it's not supposed to make noise. It's not supposed to disturb my peace and quiet, or my quality of life, which it has. So I have gone to Shepherd Law Firm at one time, and I have a letter from Cecilia Quick here saying the business is totally illegal. Well, that is not true. And so the noise was so loud at one, well, many times, it's daily. And I went to the city hall to talk to the city attorney at one time, well, that was Cecilia, and they actually told me that if I don't leave, they're going to arrest me. So I had to leave, which I don't know how they're going to arrest me for. And I have requested copies of permits in 2004, which I received nothing. I didn't know anything about request forms and stuff until I was informed by other people, not your city council or your city officials, which they should have informed me. I have letters from the prosecutors, of Steven Rosenberg, asking for a use permit, and, and the property behind Seaview Tire and Brake is not permitted for, for the use, it's a fire lane, actually, and is not in the, not in the use permit. And the fire marshal is unable to impose a condition on this property. Well, it's got stripes for parking right now. The situation is getting worse instead of better. So the front parking lot is in violation of municipal code, and there's nothing that's ever been done about that. He was issued permits in 2012, which how do you get a permit for, you know, permits or for lifts in 2012, having no conditions of approval, and no permit for expansion of a non-conforming business? And I asked him, how do you?
Roger, that's all. Thank you. Okay. Marcia, followed by Ron Berger, followed by Todd Slessinger.
My name is Marcia Settle, and I'm president of the Advisory Board of the Pacifica Resource Center, and I'm here to talk in support of the presentation on affordable housing. I know, I moved to Pacifica 34 years ago because it was less expensive than San Francisco, and I think that's why a lot of us ended up here, and then discovered it was a wonderful place to live. But there's a big difference between less expensive and affordable. And the issue is certainly countywide, statewide, whatever, and it's, I'm glad to hear Pacifica step up to the plate and in working on, hopefully, working on a solution. The Resource Center is a frontline in, within the problem, but all we can do is put on Band-Aids. We can issue, help someone with utilities, and hope that that gives them more money towards their rent. We can maybe do a one-time housing voucher. But folks are facing this every month, and it's a shame to see people who've lived here for their lives have, their children can't live here. Their parents can't live here. And I'm glad to hear us, hopefully, take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Ron Berger, Todd Slessinger, Tru Stier.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ron Berger, and I'm a Pacifica resident. And I love it here. I was a commercial fisherman for many years, and got out of commercial fishing to come to the Bay Area and, and sort of reinvent myself as a, as a construction person. And the last, I'm retired right now, but the last job that I had, just because we've talked about numbers tonight, I was a warehouse manager, and I ran a safety program for a construction company from South San Francisco. And just with the, the numbers that were put up on the, on your screen a while ago, even when I, I'm retired now, but even when I was working full-time in the capacity that I just described, 30% of my income would have given me about $800 a month for rent. And if, I guess you all know what the rents are in this city, what you can get for $800 a month is a room in a house, and probably without a kitchen. And in fact, that's what I got for myself. And since I'm retired, my income is probably about half of what it was when I was working full-time, kind of fixed income, social security. And I'd just like to say that what happens when, when people and places start getting squeezed, is that you, you start compromising either the amount of space that you have, or the conveniences that you have. I lived in rooms all over San Mateo County that had no kitchens, because what you get for $800 a month or less is a room without a kitchen, and it's usually a pretty small room. So I just like to throw that into the, to the mix of conversation about housing and affordability. And, you know, there's a lot of young people that are not going to be able to stay here, and that's a shame, because this is such a, I've been to a lot of places up and down this coast, and there isn't anywhere more beautiful than Pacifica, and I can vouch for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Slessinger, Tru Stier, and Deborah Mallon. And that's the last card after you.
Good evening, Todd Slessinger Lindemar. Hey, hello out there to all my fans, friends, and family. Okay, some information for a couple of people. The people with Pia, if you're wondering why there's no affordable housing in Pacifica, you can thank the tree huggers that ran this town for 30 years. So if you voted for the tree huggers, and you're complaining now that you've got no housing, that's the reason why. Number two, solutions. I deal in results and solutions and ideas, not BS. You want to get Roger Medler out of here? Build a sound wall. If there's a fire road, build a sound wall. Come on, people. Okay, moving right along. A little shout-out to Pete DeJarned. Yeah, pretty good idea, huh, Mary Ann? Yeah, thanks. Pete DeJarned and John Curtis, great segue in passing the football off to Pete DeJarned to be the mosquito abatement representative for the city of Pacifica. You know what the definition of a mosquito is, don't you? A two-wing, blood-sucking insect. Okay, Mike, you're next. Free Free speech lives. Don't waste our time with meetings and BS about Highway One. That's political posturing. We know you're up for election this year. Say what you mean and mean what you say. Okay, now, the more important stuff. Was that the same Ian Butler that got an award tonight that used to come in here and stalk me and be a paparazzi and put a camera in my face and have the unmitigated gall to come after me on a temporary restraining order? That's the best that Pops has? And by the way, if you're with Pops and a booth and you want to know how to save the pier, you go over to the water district. 20 years ago, there was a $75,000 feasibility. You get a pilot plant for desalination, and you'll open the door to save that pier. Come on, people, use your heads. Listen to me. Do the things that I say to do, and the city will get fixed. Write it down. Write it down, people. Last but not least, what about me? Where's my commendation? Did I save the city $500,000 a year by getting rid of Cecilia Quick and all the BS at the legal department? Yeah, that's me. Did I run Jim Reeland out of town? Yeah, that was me. Did I single-handedly get rid of the biodiesel with Nancy Hall, which was costing the city money? Yeah, that was me. Did I single-handedly harp and harp and harp until we got meters and money coming in at the beach? I've saved this city millions of dollars right here at the podium. And all I get is vilified. You guys suck.
Tree Stier and Deborah Mallon.
Good evening. Tree Stier for Chino Way Crescent Drive. I just want to say maybe Todd Slessinger never got a proclamation, and maybe he deserves one like a lot of other people, but I gave him one, so I hope it's hanging on the wall. Anyway, getting back to better things here. I want to read a little clip from the newspaper, November 26th issue of the Pacifica Tribune, when they interviewed our city manager. And I liked what she had to say, because she said, "The view from her city hall office, moving into the city manager's office, she had a view of a wall of peeling paint on the city-owned building next door. She asked for that building to be repainted, and the work was done last week." So that was done already in November. Thank you very much. The other thing is, and she started this communication class, which I guess is going on in March, which I attended, and hopefully it's working with you, Mary Ann, because you did respond to me, you did call me about, you know, this letter that I wanted to present tonight. But my week was as busy as yours, and I was out at Fort Miley today where you worked to get a shot in my knee amongst other things, to get my income tax made out. So I do have a copy of that lawsuit, and I will put it in a letter form to you with a copy, although I brought it up previously in front of the city council. And I'm trying to prevent lawsuits, but I'll tell you, this is not a funny matter. And I'll tell you why. Because when it comes to service, and you, Mike O'Neil, will understand that when it came to the sewer, because I have your comments on, on that too, with Proposition 219, that you can only, you know, distribute that money a certain way. And so this money should have been distributed amongst all the residents. Now, I'm going to tell you of an incident. My next-door neighbor, who lived there 17 years and was in real estate and moved away, a couple from San Bruno bought her place. She had a unilateral sewer put in, and the minute they moved in, right before Christmas, they've had nothing but problems with their two toilets overflowing, and it cost them $8,000 now. So where does, you know, what's the problem here? They didn't go far enough under the house, or, I'd like more information on those ulaterals, how far they have to go under the house. So I will get this information to you. And for you, Len Stone, I brought up the filth in, was parked Pacifica, and you didn't do anything about it. So the communication isn't working with you. And that's a health hazard. We don't have a goodwill truck there, and nobody needs to dump their furniture there and draw rats. There's restaurants there, there's dental offices there, and I hate to go there, to tell you the truth, with all that trash, because there was a rat infestation in Pacific Manor that a senior citizen couple had to move. So I think, you know, if you don't do something about it, then I'll call the health department. But really, that's not my job. Thank you.
And last but not least is Deborah Mallon.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Mallon. I'm one of the residents of Pacific Sky Estates that has had the potential of an $1,1119 monthly rental increase hanging over our heads since October of 2013. On January 13th, I spoke before this council because I believe that someone with influence within the city of Pacifica had made a decision to withhold our testimonials from the application packet that had been delivered to the hearing officer. This was based on my sitting in the hearing on January 7th and listening to the opposing council objecting to our discussing service reductions, our attorney referring to our testimonials, and the judge not recognizing receipt of these. I later learned that Matthew Visick, whose firm is handling this for the city, had stated that the city would not be providing to the hearing officer any communications it received related to the application. That was when I decided I was tired of being pushed around, and I came before the council and I vented. Pacific Coast News then got involved, and Michelle Morales learned from the planning department that they had sent all the testimonials with the application packet. At that point, I was thoroughly confused, but I chose to have faith in the city planning department, and I waited for the judge's decision. Last Friday, February 21st, the judge's decision was published. The application was denied without prejudice, so we may not, but, so we may not be done with this yet. On pages two and three of the decision, it states, "Prior to the hearing, a number of the respondents submitted opposition, largely in the form of emails addressing reductions in services and general opposition to the requested increase." This proves that the hearing officer did receive the testimonials. This is all leading up to me saying, "I'm sorry. I was wrong. I should have given the city, and especially the planning department, the benefit of the doubt, but I didn't. I regret any stress that I may have caused, and I ask you to accept my sincere apology." Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. And moved. And that brings us back to the item that we pulled from the consent calendar. I just want to say, we so rarely get thank youed, I was kind of, thank you.
Thank you for the thank you.
Very right. So it comes back to the consent calendar item, and that's computer equipment purchase. Staff report, please.
Stephen Carmichael, step up to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council members. The purchase for new computers will replace computers that currently have had an eight-to-10 year life. And Microsoft will no longer cover the, the operating software on these old systems starting later this spring.
Yeah.
So we're forced to buy new systems, even though many of these are failing on a regular basis and need to be replaced anyway. So are there specific questions that you had?
Councilmember O'Neil.
So I, I'm not trying to sound like a prosecutor here, but, so basically, our, the existing computers are breaking down and in need of repair, which means employees don't have use of those computers, correct?
That's correct. So we have downtime from, because?
Right, and right now, in April, the operating systems, which is the very core of the computer, will no longer be supported, correct?
Correct.
So we cannot buy any more programs, get help from Microsoft, nothing, in order to put Band-Aids and Scotch tape on these things and baling wire.
That's correct. And with the price of computers today, putting the Band-Aids on them is actually not cost-effective at all, because there's, they've become so cheap that it's almost easier to replace with a new one than to put in parts.
So in private industry, what's the average turnover time when they replace computers? I know the school district did it. They had a cycle every three years or four years, they replaced a bunch of computers.
Well, in today's market, every two to three years in private industry usually. Five years is a real outside number.
Okay, so?
We're getting twice as much use out of them than normal, than, than the private industry.
So then, we've actually kept them three times longer than private industry would have kept them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so this will enable the employees to actually come into the 21st century with an operating system?
Yes, sir.
It'll allow us to have better programs that can meet the needs in the IT department for better information for both the public and staff and council?
Yes, that is the intent.
Okay. And of course, the employees will be able to get some training on the new systems or whatever, if they need it, or new programs?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you, Stephen. I hope, I didn't sound like a prosecutor.
No problem.
Any other questions?
No, it's a reasonable clarification. I just wanted to ask one follow-up. We did the same thing at the VA, and then some of our programs were old enough that they didn't work. Do we have anything like that, that we're also going to have to upgrade?
We do have a couple of situations like that, and we are looking into alternatives for upgrades to those systems so that they will run on their own systems.
So I figure there's software upgrades too that we have to do. It's just, it's an expected cost to do in business. Any, any public comment? Have no cards, see no one, bring it back to council?
Thank you, Stephen.
Councilmember Stone.
Yeah, I think it's vital that we have the correct tools for our staff to be able to, to get the job done, and I think it's important that, that the city manager recognizes this as well, so I thank you for that. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase order number 30127 to purchase 40 replacement personal computers.
I'll second it, and just have one comment.
Okay.
And the comment is, is this was in the budget for this year, so this is not an out-of-budget, off-budget expenditure, but this was planned by the previous city manager for an expense this year, so it is a budgeted item.
Councilmember DeGruy.
I do sit sometimes and use these computers. I hope the one I use gets to be affected. It's definitely in great need.
There are things in there that belong in a computer museum.
Thanks, you're going to home.
All right, would everybody please vote? And that passes five to zero. And with that, I want to wish everybody a lovely evening.